Everyone. Welcome to the special session of the Oviedo City Council. It is Monday, March 10th, 2014. Approximately 5:30 PM. We have all members of council present. Our first item of business is Resolution Number 2808-14, Interlocal Agreement with Seminole County. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cobb for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for City Council to approve an interlocal agreement with Seminole County pertaining to the distribution and use of one, of the one cent sales tax. Seminole County has scheduled a referendum for May the 20th, 2014. The subject of the interlocal agreement pertains to the shared distribution and use of the one cent sales tax, and it must be executed by the county, the cities, and the school district. The anticipated city share is around 3.07 percent, or approximately $19.38 million over the life of the revenue. Recommended city projects are provided in Exhibit C, and they do total out to $19,700,000. We also have some projects that are listed in what we call the major projects. State Route 426, State Route 419, widening Phases II and III. The intersection improvements to Mitchell Hammock Road and State Route 434. And then also PDNE for the widening of State Route 434 from Mitchell Hammock to State Route 417. City Attorney has reviewed the subject agreement and has found it to be legally acceptable, and has recommended that City Council adopt Resolution Number 2808-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Cobb, are they also including Mitchell Hammock, Redbug, and 426, or is that something out of a separate funding source? I know that's getting done as well.
Are you talking about the turn lanes?
Yeah.
That's out of a, yeah, I believe that's out of a different funding source.
All righty, let's just see. And then Bobby, you have adaptive traffic light controls in here, correct?
The 426 Redbug Mitchell Hammock is Metro Plan Funds, O and M.
Okay.
Additional funds.
Great.
So, separate funding source.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Wyatt, Wyatt's here? Anybody have any questions for anybody on staff?
How long does the sequence have been laid up?
Pardon?
When you lay down Mitchell Hammock in there? Where?
When?
What happened? How long is the sequence?
Too long for my preference right now. I've already put a call in to have it examined, but of course, this is day one. So it'll take a couple of weeks for them to evaluate and see how long it's going to cycle out.
I'd say it was almost three minutes.
And that was, that was during a non-peak hour, which had me a little concerned as well, but I've already got the process started.
How about we just get adaptive light control, or traffic controls, or whatever they're called, and it'll just adjust them as they go?
Assuming that the sales tax is passed, that is a project we have listed, so hopefully we can get that going. Yes, sir, it needs to be done.
Thank you, Bobby.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question for Mr. Cobb. Brian, in Exhibit 1, it looks like it might be the very last page. I just need some clarification on something.
Okay.
It's showing the distribution of net revenues under Interlocal Agreement section. It's Exhibit D.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It lists all the cities.
Right.
You know, and then at the, at the bottom, after Winter Springs, it has Seminole County, 31.40 percent. But then I see that Seminole County gets, from the top, the school board gets 25 percent, and Seminole County gets 24 or something percent. Is this an additional 31 percent out of what the cities get?
The school board gets 25 percent. 24.2 percent is set aside for the major projects. These are the big projects countywide that, you know, like the three that we have. Okay? That's, there's, those three projects are in that 24 percent. They're not part of the localized projects, okay? Then you have the next share, which is what we call the operational share. That's, that is a little over 50 percent of the cost, I believe, if that's correct, Mr. Wyatt. The county gets the lion's share of that dollars, okay? The cities get our 19.4, and out of the total, out of the whole 100 percent, we get 3 percent. But that's, that's that third piece. There's three types of it. There's the school board, the county majors, and then there's that city-county.
Right.
And the county gets 31 percent of that city-county. The cities get 19.4 of that city-county.
Okay.
So that's, that's how the three different, it breaks down.
And that makes up the 100 percent then?
Yes, ma'am. That's how, that's how that works out.
And that, and that 31.4 percent, that is used for the, to, for the city, for the cities? The county uses it to help us?
There is, there may be some projects. It's mostly for unincorporated, quite honestly. But there may be projects in our area that the city will benefit from. They're just not actually that, they're not detailed that much. There may be a stormwater project. There may be some resurfacing, where they'll resurface the roadway up to the city limits, knowing that we're resurfacing ourselves. They know that we have a resurfacing program. So, I mean, there's, there's projects, but they're primarily concentrated in the unincorporated area. I believe there was, in one of the projects, just giving you an idea, there's some mast-arm improvements at 417 and Redbug. That's part of this 31.4 percent.
And we benefit from it?
We benefit, yes.
Okay.
But it's not specifically allocated. Now, in the major projects, those three projects were allocated, you know, in Oviedo.
Right. I saw that.
So.
Thank you. I just didn't quite understand that.
Sure.
Anything else? Another, another way to look at this is, Oviedo will be getting about $55 to $56 million worth of projects if this passes. The only city that has a slightly higher dollar figure of projects between the county money and the local money is Sanford. And it's not by much, and it's really only because they're getting a larger portion based on population of the split. They're actually getting a smaller portion of the, the regional dollars. So, you know, the county commission, I mean, we should be very thankful to them. You know, they have recognized the need of traffic improvement out here in eastern Seminole County, and they have dedicated a large portion of this to Oviedo and the surrounding community. So hopefully it'll pass. Hopefully folks will see the need. Anything else? I don't believe we have a motion yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hank.
Make a motion to stop Resolution 2808-14.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion?
No.
No debate? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, Resolution Number 2816-14, support for Central Florida Regional Hospital expansion here in the city of Oviedo. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to express its support for Central Florida Regional Hospital's application for a certificate of need. The Resolution 2816 expresses the council's support for expanding the freestanding emergency department into a full hospital facility. It expresses support for Central Florida Regional's application for a certificate of need, and it also encourages the citizens and businesses of Oviedo, southeastern Seminole County, as well, and eastern Orange County to also provide support for the application. It's recommended that City Council adopt Resolution 2816-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hank.
Make a motion to stop Resolution 2816-14.
Second.
Motion second. Anything, Councilman?
Good pleasure.
Councilwoman?
No.
Anything else? Letters of support, I was told today at a, at a meeting, have been coming in, so the hospital is happy with that. We did receive a, I think Brian had, had mentioned one from the mall. We got a great one from Citizens Bank just the other day that was sent to the hospital, and I know the, there is an ask for duda and the other founding families as well out there right now. So they're, they're starting to come in. They are thrilled with the reaction that they got at Taste of Oviedo on Saturday, so all seems well. Now it's up to the state and whether somebody will appeal it, but nobody put in a competing application though, so.
It's a start.
So that's a good start. All righty, without anything else, anybody? Motion's on the table to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, last item, is a memo on Center Lake Park at Oviedo on the park. I'll just turn it over to Mr. Cobb for an introduction and presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for, a request for council to provide direction for a plan to build Center Lake Park, which includes the amphitheater, our veterans tribute, our city fountain, a dog park, splash pad, a playground, concession stands, restrooms, and of course, the beloved chicken boats. We, back in 2003, the residents approved a referendum approving $9 million in bonds that, for the use of construction of Oviedo on the park. About a million of that was used with land acquisition and design services, which left us about $8 million. And when we adopted the, I believe, the Third Amendment to the acquisition agreement, $5.5 million was set aside for the infrastructure within Oviedo on the park, and then $2.5 million was set aside for the park itself. And on December the, on December 2nd of 2013, we adopted a resolution approving the hardscape, landscape, and architectural plans for the park. And the resolution also gave us the, the ability to go forward and obtain bids for the park. Mr. Kavanaugh went and solicited bids through his process. We received four bids that ranged in price from $5.4 million to around $6.7 million. A.D. Owens, Inc. was the lowest bid at $5,408,415. Mr. Kavanaugh can attest, we've had several meetings to discuss the bid. He also met with A.D. Owens, and they came forward with some value engineering, close to $300,000 worth of value engineering. Staff also went through the bid, and we found some items that we, we recommend that we not do. And there's a variety of reasons. Most of it is maintenance and upkeep of the park, as well as some other items that we felt that it would just not be in the best interest of the city to build these items. Also, we also saw that if we didn't build these items, it would not be to the detriment of the park. But the park would still, Mayor, if I could use your word, would be spectacular. And so one, that was the thing that we looked at when we came through. Knowing that we had the $2.5 million set aside for the park, we realized that we needed to come up with a plan on how to fund the construction of the park. And I, we put a team together, myself, Mr. Bowelware, Mr. Wyatt, Ms. Hayes, Mr. Boop, and we put together a plan to, to bring for, bring to you tonight, to, for the construction of the park. What Mr. Boop is going to come forward, we have the PowerPoint to show, to walk you through it, and as far as for the construction of the park. And tonight, what we would ask is that we would ask for, ask for your direction to proceed. There's a number of things that we will need to do. If this is the plan that, that you feel you want to go forward, then there's some things that we're going to have to do next month, some resolutions that we'll need to bring for you, for approval. And so I'll let Mr. Boop walk you through, and we're, like I said, the whole team's here to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, honorable mayor and council. If you can, Terry, please go to the next slide. Just a quick recap, if you will, of the bids that were received. We received a bid from Seminole Masonry Diversified, Lamb Company and Partners, Kelsey Construction, Inc., and A.D. Owens, and of course, as you can see, and as what was represented in the staff report, the lowest bid was $5.4 million and, and change. Can Terry please go to the next slide? So, as Mr. Cobb had stated, we've been meeting over the last several weeks to determine, how do we, how do we pay for this project? What's the best approach? What can we value engineer? What needs to be included in the project that we haven't included in the project? So just going from the top down, the original bid from A.D. Owens was, was $5.4 million. We discovered a little bit later that we had not included the audio components in the original bid, so we had to go back and include that. So the subtotal of the total cost for the project, if you will, including the audio components, was $5,649,471. Following that, what we did is we went through and we met with Mr. Kavanaugh, we met amongst ourselves, it was a team approach, as Mr. Cobb stated, and we took a look at the various different components of the project that could be valued engineered. After going through that approach, we discovered or recommended $336,000 in value engineering. In addition to that, as Mr. Cobb stated, there were also proposed adjustments in the project, which are also represented and stated in your staff report. So going, following that process, we had adjusted construction costs of $5,77,892. Now, we also felt the need to develop a project contingency, so taking a look at the different things that we felt that we might be bumping up against, and again, meeting with Mr. Kavanaugh, we developed a project contingency of $300,000. That leaves the total estimated project cost of $5,377,892. Any questions about that page?
Yes. Value engineering, could you give me an idea since it's not laid out? Do you guys all know what the value engineering was done? And I don't. What was the, give me a rough idea of the value engineering that was done?
Mr. Cobb, do you have that available?
And for y'all, it's attachment five.
A hundred pages of line items that were this big and...
We went the shortened version.
And we couldn't get it till Saturday night.
No problem. There's a number of, it's really, there, like, one of them is, instead of doing eight-inch live oak trees, we do six-inch live oak trees. One is an alternate light fixtures that, that we could use. One is eliminating the LED rope lighting on the boardwalk. Changing, there's this cap rock type seating near the small performance stage. What we learned, and Mr. Kavanaugh explained to us, is that it's very rough, and so it would be very uncomfortable. And so changing that to a concrete, so that's, you know, a smoother surface to work off of. Actually, it's a lot of little things.
Yeah, I get the idea. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
It's hard to pick out of that list.
Yeah. And even, even on the table...
Not building the veterans memorial or something.
Oh, no, no, no.
I understand the councilman's concern, because last time we value engineered something, a tower disappeared.
Yeah. I'm sure that was...
The second tank from the water plant disappeared, so.
Right. No, and that's...
You weren't here for that, Bobby.
When, when you do get a chance to go in and look at it, I would recommend looking at the breakdown behind the summary sheet, because you'll see what was proposed, you'll see what Mr. Kavanaugh accepted, and then you'll see also what he rejected. And, but there's also some items that are still undefined, that they're waiting on some costs from the vendors. And so there's a possibility that there may be further value engineering that may come in. One of the things we were looking at was the playground equipment. There's the playground equipment that's in the bid, but then we also have our own vendor. And so Mr. Bowelware went, has gone to our vendor, and they're taking a look at what equivalent playground equipment they have. So that we'll still get the same quality, but it may be at a lesser price. And so there's things like that that we're looking at.
Just making sure we're true value engineering, what the mayor said, removing or just kind of, that kind of thing, so that's all.
Mayor, Brian, can I ask you another question? I mean, I'm sure you guys have looked at this and hit no lease firms, but I, I know in my business, when I tend to look at bids that, you know, the fourth guy is $500,000 cheaper, you know, third guy is $500,000 more than $700, and $1.3 million. Are we sure, oh, sure, I'm sure you checked this A.D. Owens company out, but when you see somebody quote the same stuff with $5.4 and $6.7, were these other companies given the opportunity to value engineer all this stuff? Did it, there's a big swing from first to second. $1.3 million buys a lot of stuff, and, you know, materials and stuff gotta be the same price, so I mean, unless they're doing enough labor, you know, are you, that's a big swing. I just ask and throwing it out, making sure it's...
Well, I think that, I think the deciding thing for me was when we were meeting with Mr. Kavanaugh, and he had vetted out all of the bids before he even brought them to us. He, actually, he brought these and said, these are the ones that qualified.
Right.
And the thing that he said about A.D. Owens was that they were providing the total project. And that was, because we were questioning that. We started, the initial, when we went through the initial bid, there were a lot of things that we had questions about, and we got all our questions answered. And so we felt like we were getting the total project and that it was the best price.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Brian, when you receive these bids, were they bids for the same scope of services, each of them? Or I, I remember talking to you, and they seemed to be a little bit off, and you can't get a true bid unless they're the same, you're, you're putting out for the same services and getting a bid for those same services. Were all of these companies given what, were their bids for the same thing, is what I'm trying to say?
My understanding is they were. All the information was provided. I mean, it's, they all received the same information from Mr. Kavanaugh, I guess is what I'm saying.
This is probably where it's apropos to me to explain the system to you. Good afternoon to everybody, by the way. I got a little bit of a cold, a little rough.
Stay away from Hank, he's leaving on a cruise.
I know. We started many, many months ago with a complete set of drawings that were sent out to five bidders, the fifth one being Land South, and they just weren't giving me the attention that I needed, and at the end of the day, they came back and said, Tom, it's just too small of a project for us. We build large, large apartment complexes, and you want to build a smaller version of Walt Disney World, quality-wise? And he says, we just don't do that, we're not set up for that. I said, fine, I understand. So I went to the people that, in my opinion, can do a small boutique-ish type job. They all received the same amount of plans, they all had the same amount of time. Out of the four, two of them followed my instructions, two of them didn't. And the, the difference was, I asked them all to break it down into each component of construction, and two of them gave me a breakdown per classification, AIA classification, site work, lumber, masonry, et cetera, where I wanted that, but I also wanted it broken down into tower, cultural center, boardwalk, into more category of construction out there. So two did, two didn't. I sent them back out to the two that didn't and said, guys, I need to be able to compare apples with apples. I got all four of them back, and that's when I started vetting them. And, you know, when you start the process, they're all over the place. And, you know, to answer, you know, Councilman Hank's question, why can you have 1.3? I just bid a project over in Sarasota, and I had project numbers from $22 million to $41 million. I mean, how can somebody miss it by, you know, 100 percent? I have no idea. But usually, it's fear the unknown, it's uncomfortable outside their box, so there's many reasons that they just throw a bunch of contingency. Could be the subs they're picking, it could be a commercial guy that just only has commercial subs that inflate their numbers. So we kind of worked backwards, and the one we ultimately selected, A.D. Owens, worked with me on the beginning. You know, he was there with George from the beginning, and he's the gentleman that built and worked with the amphitheater over, I believe it was Mead Gardens, correct? Okay. So he has a little bit of experience in doing this, and if history repeats itself, the guy that is active from the beginning and asks the most amount of questions and digs in the deepest always gets the job. And I, I, I keep a very detailed file of what I call RFI, is Request for Information. And I'm telling you, A.D. Owens submitted probably four times the amount of requests for information, Kelsey was second, by the way, than anybody else. So he got answers right up front, and they've been working hard ever since. So to make a long story short, yes, they all got the bids, they all were bidding from the same sheet of music, they all had the same opportunity, the same timeframe, there was no favoritism in any way, shape, or form, because I don't have a pony in the race. I don't, I don't do business with any of them, they have no financial ties to me in any way, shape, or form.
I wasn't even going there.
I understand that, but I just wanted to throw that out.
Like Councilman Hank says, you know, you get two different bids and they're, they're far apart.
Right.
Sometimes you take the, the less expensive one, but there's something missing. And then you get finished and you go, oh, this is missing, and we have to put in that extra money anyway.
No.
So I'm just wondering if everything was compared and we're going to end up with the same product.
I either met with all four of them or had extensive conversations on the phone. Now, there's still one additional exercise that I need to do with A.D. Owens, and I'm going to make them basically bring through the door all their major subs, and I'm going to meet with them. And we're going to go over every i, dot every i, cross every t, and make sure that they have exactly in their scope what needs to be, because I hate surprises. I don't want to sit up here and tell you, well, you know, the framer missed 2,000 linear feet on the board. So I need to sit down and have that, what I call nuts and bolts discussion with A.D. Owens. I couldn't have it up to this point, because I didn't know where the money was coming from, what was going to be billed, what was being eliminated, what was remaining. So I actually have a meeting with them tomorrow to go over, we're going to go over the audio components. I have not vetted the audio components with them, and I need to. It won't be any more than that, trust me. But I need to thoroughly understand what's in the audio components, and if we can, if I can tell them at that time that, you know, you don't have the contract, but I've got approval to negotiate with you, I need to take it to what I call the last step, which is to sit down and go through every single line item with it and vet, and just vet every single one of their subs out. Because I want to know who they're doing business with, I want the quality of their subs, and I'm, and I want to make sure they have everything included, right down to...
They certainly got good recommendations.
Well, you know, I don't know them all that well, but when I checked them out and, and got, I got, I haven't given this to Brian yet, and I sure will, I have a copy of his financial statements, I have his contractor qualification statements, knowing that if he gets the job, the next thing is to dump all this in Brian's lap and let him look at them from, you know, a financial standpoint. The one other thing I'd like to mention, and I'm sure staff will do a very good job of telling you, because Councilman Schenk asked the question, what is the VE? The VE is a lot of, you know, I'm a big guy in the touch feel, you know, if I'm going to change something, it needs to look, feel, and have the same texture. So when we switch the light fixtures out, I'm not eliminating light fixtures, I'm not changing from LEDs to fluorescents, I'm just going from a manufacturer to another. Okay? Or, or for whatever reason, let's just say, and I just had this at the apartment complex, we specified a 22-inch fixture, and I could VE down to a 21-inch fixture and save a gazillion dollars, and I'm going, I can save $15,000 by shortening this fixture by one inch. So, you know, a lot of those things are just no-brainer. So the value engineering is simple, it's, it's, the meat and potatoes is definitely there, it's behind the walls, it's the substitution of manufacturers. But there is a line item of their proposed adjustments, and they haven't spoken to it yet, that is removing some of the elements that staff has recommended from the project. So I didn't want to have any confusion there. I've met with staff, we discussed them thoroughly, they, they asked my opinion, I gave my opinion, they agreed with me and said, guys, we really don't need, for example, one thing they'll discuss with is the overlook. You know, to me, it's just a giant liability issue. You know, creating something that goes 20 feet off the ground, that's got some railings, people are going to be jumping into the lake, you know? And I think last time we met, we joked about it, let's put a zip line on it. I think somebody said, put a zip line on it. And, right, and let's zip across the, and that's, that's cool. I mean, and picture-wise, that's fantastic, but, you know, I'm not so sure that's the smartest thing we could do from a liability standpoint, and having that thing, you know, shoot up over there.
Yeah, everybody who faces the lake who wants to go shop, put a zip line right down and station track.
Exactly, you know? And the problem with the overlook shoots out over the water, so I can sit here and I'm thinking to myself, okay, well, I have a hard time keeping my kids off of the roof, jumping into my pool, and it's only six feet away, you know?
Right.
Can you imagine that, and somebody, guys going out there and doing a swan dive off of it into the, into the lake at night? And God forbid, and God forbid, we go through a drought and the lake's not full? They're going to hit...
Oh.
The bank!
Oh.
So I'm here. Any questions?
Thank you.
Please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, you want Tom to finish for you?
Why not? You do well.
Can you just, then, just talk about the Adjustment to Builder's Risk and Performance Fund also?
That would be Mr. Kavanaugh.
Okay. The Adjustment to Builder's Risk and Performance. Where is that, Councilman? I'm sorry, that's in the memo, I think it's... It's not on our... It's part of that, but...
Builders' risk is simple. I asked them all to include it in their bids specs, their numbers came back, just astronomical high, I went to my people, cut it right in half. So I told them, I said, just take the entire builder's risk package out of your number, I'll provide the builder's risk, which we grossed it up. The other fee is just whatever we save in value engineering or moving numbers around, it's lowered by, I don't know, 6% or 5.5%, whatever their fee was.
For seven jobs.
Right, so it just goes down. General conditions aren't going to change, because we didn't shorten the project. The duration, I think, is still 10 or 11 months, I'm just doing this by memory. My guess is it's going to be 11 months. There's a lot of little pieces to this, which we are finding out...
The builder's risk was the one, I didn't, I'm like, what are we doing with builder's risk? Is, you know, $30,000, where does that go?
They're going to be bonded, I'm bringing the builder's risk to the table, you know, same normal requirements the city put on me when we did the park is going to be put on them also.
Is that like revenge? A little bit of revenge, you're going to take it out on A.D. Owens?
No.
Okay, we're here, we're still here at the estimated project cost, so Terry, if you could go to the next slide. The estimated project cost, again, were 5.3, almost 5.4 million. So, what's the plan to pay for this? The first part, and perhaps I think the most complicated part, is that, as you know, last year, we took out the 2013 drawdown facility for which we brought to you. And we originally pledged that we would put 1,250,000 into Center Lake Park, a million into the fire station, 650,000 for lights at the fields, and 750,000 into the community center, with 250,000 for the public safety building. So, moving forward with Center Lake Park is going to require us to repurpose the funds that we had originally brought to you last year, from the original, to the recommended column, which you see presented in front of you. So, Center Lake Park's going to go from 1,250,000 to 2,586,000. And the other amounts will be adjusted as well, going all the way down to the total 3.9 million. But the key that we need to understand tonight is that we will be increasing the amount that we pledged towards Center Lake Park from 1,250,000 to 2,586,750, and that we will be bringing to you in a resolution. So, with that, next slide, please. So, that was the most complicated part. Total funding sources are going to be, as you know, Mr. Cobb mentioned in opening, that we have bond proceeds available of 2,500,000, the repurposing of the drawdown facility of 2,586,750. And we will also be needing a, potentially needing, I should say, a temporary loan from the renewal and replacement fund, the utility renewal and replacement fund, to cover the contingency for $300,000. Total project cost is 5,386,750.
That would all be if you need it.
If we needed it. I know there always is question and concern about whether or not, can the fund that's lending the money actually afford that? We are very blessed here, the renewal and replacement fund is very healthy, has a healthy balance of about $2.6 million. I will not miss that $300,000 whatsoever. We'll be bringing forward a resolution to you as well for that, to pay it back to the renewal and replacement fund at $30,000 a year over a 10-year period at no interest. Next slide, please. So, the project plan is this, we have proceeds of 5,386,750, estimated project cost of 5,377,892. At the current time, we're projecting a surplus of $8,858. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, if we accept the award to the bid for A.D. Owens of 5.3 million, we will need a resolution for that. We will also need a resolution for the $300,000 for the loan to the general fund from renewal and replacement. We will also need a resolution to repurpose the drawdown facility. And with that, that is the plan that staff has been working on over the last several weeks, that's what we propose to you, and need to ask you if you have any questions.
Mayor, before we move forward just a little bit, I wanted to, I wanted to review with the council the items that the staff was recommending, that the additional savings that we not do. Mr. Kavanaugh did mention the overlook, and it is, it's a huge risk factor, that was our rationale for it.
It is very cool.
It's very cool. It is very cool. We talked a lot about people belly flopping into the muck and being sucked in, so, but there was a lot of risk, risk insurance issues that we had with that one. The other one was the Osprey Tower, which is the tower where the nest would actually be built, which is not far from the overlook. Once again, it's a maintenance issue with the bird droppings, as well as the dead animals, and it also, it's a protected animal, and so, you're inviting the state into your neighborhood. And that's, we just felt like that the tower was really not something that we wanted to have at this park. Yes, it sounds great on the front end, oh, let's have a place to go look at the birds, but the maintenance that would be required on it, and then dealing with the health issues of the bird droppings and the dead animals that are made towards food...
We can fill the lake up with ducks or something.
Yeah.
In the wetlands, I'm sure there's going to be plenty of animals.
Yes. And, so...
What's that?
Right. And the thing is, is that without that tower, you really don't need the observation system. And once again, this was a $65,000 system that is going to be subject to the weather. And so, we just looked at that from a maintenance or replacement issues. Also, one of the things that weighed on my mind was small children looking in the periscope, seeing the birds, and not really knowing what's being seen. So, that was something else, because they're animals, and whether or not we wanted to subject them to them. The periscope, once again...
What were you envisioning, like a horror flick?
Yes, I was. Mommy, mommy, look!
Now, what were those movies back in the day?
The Birds.
Yeah, Alfred Hitchcock.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were those horror flicks.
So, I mean, that was just one of the things, and with the, even though the periscope's not a big ticket item, one of the things that Mr. Kavanaugh and I talked about was the old-fashioned periscope that you look into and you can guide it around the park. Maybe we'll look for one of those, but we just did not feel that this periscope was going to be the best option, because they, it's a, it's a package. We also felt that this was not something that would reduce the value of the park. We got to look into the boats, and we've recommended that we reduce the number of boats from six to four. And that was a concern that we had about being too many boats on the pond. We really don't have a lot of space out there. We were joking around that maybe we'll have to convert one to a police boat and put lights and a siren on it, but, but we, we had a lot of fun with that one. But we felt like four boats would be sufficient for that lake. And so, that was it. We, you know, we were able to, we were able, through those savings, we were able to save approximately $235,000. So, it's a significant savings, but it's not a, it's not an impact to the value of the park.
Anything else, Brian?
No, sir.
All right, let me see if we have any questions. I'll go up and down the desk, I'll start from the left. Councilman Britton?
Just a few. I guess I need you back up here, Tom. You know, we talked about the, the value engineering reductions, and I guess my first question is, did we approve this, Brian, I'll go to this, try not to get too far off track, I think we approved the 3.9 million back last August. Did we have a complete set of drawings back then to base that, that number on?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay, so my, I guess my question for you, Tom, what was the, our estimate for the cost of the package we sent out for bids? Did we have one?
Are you asking, did we have an internal budget before we sent everything out to bid?
Yeah, you know, we had the, you know, usually, you do a package, and most of the time, the engineer, the A&amp;E firm, will give you an estimated cost of that package to use as a baseline for when you get the bids in.
The answer to your question is, yes, we had a preliminary budget put together by Dix Lathrop, which, you know, the minute I looked at it, and this was back prior to Brian, it was with Catherine, I just kind of laughed at it, it was...
It wasn't a takeoff, in other words?
No, we had nothing to take off. Back in those days, we were looking at six or eight pretty pictures and said, this is what it needs to look like. So, when these guys were doing preliminary budgets, it was their best guess, and I'm telling you, it was a guess.
Okay. But what, the package that got sent to the prospective bidders, that was a detailed package, right?
Full-blown architectural engineering.
So, that's...
Hardscape, landscape, it's everything.
Did the A&amp;E do an estimate for that?
Did the architect do an estimate for his? No.
Okay.
No.
That's the question I had. So, what I'm looking for is something to baseline what the bids came in at, compared to what we, or our engineers' technical opinion was at what it should cost, and then we can decide whether they're, if they're high or low, and then make a value engineering decision from that.
You know, we wrestle with this all the time, and what you're dealing with is a very specialized construction project. And George Powell, Powell Design Group's one that did the architekts, I would doubt seriously if he has even the know-how to put together a bid on this specialty, because there's just so many lots of little parts and pieces that go into this. The best bid that we've always come up was, we just send it out to the construction world, and we get four or five bids, and we come back, and we vet it thoroughly, and those are the numbers. It is not unusual in today's environment to have a significant discrepancy in bids.
I understand, that's what I'm saying, Neil, and I agree, that's one way to do it, but it's handy to have something to baseline from, whether right or wrong. You know, I've got a job we just awarded $100 million to over at Space, and we thought it was going to be A.D.
Yeah.
We did a detailed takeoff and scrubbed it and scrubbed it, and that's what it came in at. But we had to have that, that takeoff to start with, so that we could determine where we made a mistake, if we made one, or where the contractor made a mistake, if he made one.
Brian, if I, can I, didn't we do like 85%, you know, and we got estimates based on 85%? That's what I'm recollecting, something along outlines, it was like an 85%, and they gave us the, the estimate, was that?
We were asking for...
Was that something else?
We were asking for an 85% certainty factor, I guess, would be, you know, and I don't think we ever got it.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm thinking of the...
It was purely my...
The other building, or if we have like 85% drawings, and they gave us an estimate based on...
You're talking about the civic center.
That was, that was the community center. Yes.
Nobody gave us an estimate, my recollection was 85% design documents for the council to bless from a conceptual moving forward.
Brian, didn't you just have CPH go through this, too?
They're, we haven't engaged them yet. We just set it up so that we could, if we needed to. Mr. Britton, to address your...
Save that money if we don't have it.
Right, we will.
Yeah, and that's water and irrigation, no pun intended.
The, just to answer your question, Dix's estimate was 4.492 million.
Okay.
And, but, like Mr. Kavanaugh said, there was a number of holes in that. We knew it was going to be in that area. If you think about, you know, coming around 5.4, that's probably a good, a good variable there. So, when it came, when I noticed that A.D. Owens was within, you know, a half a million of the Dix estimate, I figured we were close.
Okay. 4.4 to what were they, 5.3?
Yeah, so, well, I'm sorry, yeah. 4.492.
That's the math I'm trying to get a hold of here.
I think my math wasn't working either.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious, you know, it is what it is. I'm not sure how to resolve it from this point, we can, we want to get the project done. I'll go from there, see if I've got anything else. I think that's all I had was questioning, oh, I know what it was, is the value engineering. So, you started from the Owens bid, and value engineer does a takeoff, or from their, their numbers, or...
I took the gross amount of the A.D. Owens bid and sat down with them several times to go through it, because a lot of times, I can just catch errors right on the surface immediately. And, you know, we spent about three, four hours just going back and forth, do you have this, do you have this, who's your lowest bidder here, how much coverage do you have, you know, the nine yards that we go through. And I said, you know, guys, we've got to come to the table and lower this down. And, you know, I just took a few liberties and said, let's do some value engineering that, in my opinion, would be acceptable to take. As Brian said, there's probably about 30 or 40 items that I didn't even take. I just said, no, 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 I said, I'm just not doing this. So, I worked backwards to a number, and there's no magical number, I was not told to get the 5 million, there were, I just said, let me just start deducting things from a common sense standpoint on what we can do. So, you know, there's still a few items that I have to follow up on, there's going to be some things changed, and when we meet with the contractor, vet it out, but I'm very comfortable that at the end of the day, the numbers won't change, some individual line items in there might change.
That's one way to do it. I come from a different world with a lot of...
How do you do?
...brains attached and things like that.
Blank check.
Our procurement has a, we can't, we can't issue a purchase order without an estimate attached to it.
Yeah.
Secret, you know, it's, it's not released, but it's our independent estimate, so that when the bids come in, we compare it.
You know, I just have found in today's environment, and you're probably in a more specialized world than I am, that the estimates that I get from the architects, the engineers, the LAs of the world, they're just, they're not accurate. And I can't rely on them, and, you know, God bless them, and it even gets worse when you start dealing with a specialty project such as this. I have a very difficult time relying on it from my apartment complexes, and I build them every day. But this was a little different ammo, it was just, there's so many different parts and pieces, and tons and tons of hardscape work here.
It may be a sign of the times, we went through several years where everything was coming in low.
Not anymore right now, because I can tell you, I have a favorite saying of mine with my partners, I said, the inmates are running the asylum, meaning that the subcontractors are now back in charge, unfortunately.
Okay, thanks.
Tom, in a perfect world, I mean, if this all passes, all these resolutions come to us, I think I asked you this last time, when can that all be done? I mean, and I'm not hoping this, this is not anything, but when's your best guess? And if people go in there and go on that splash pad, and they can go see the memorial and go in the park and all this, what do you think, if everything goes right?
Well, carving out which, what council has to do, I can be ready from my standpoint in less than 30 days. And 10 months?
10 months from the time it's all set up?
Yeah.
So, this is March, you got April, May for us?
Throw an extra month in as a cushion.
It's June or July for you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a, well, what are we doing, we doing March, April? Yeah, I mean, the splash pad and everything, it would be nice to open it up right before summer, have some sort of grand opening, maybe May-ish, and get the kids out of school, and get splash pads set up, and start having some summer concerts out there.
Well, good, I'm good, that's all right, thank you.
Councilwoman?
I don't think, this isn't for you, Tom, so if you want to sit down, feel free to sit down.
Okay, if you need me.
Yep. Brian, I was looking at the funding, and I see that you've cut money from the fire station and the lights, and I'm assuming that that was all worked out, that nothing is going, we're not going to leave them hanging and not having what they need. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Regarding the lights, the 415,000 is what it actually cost us, because we're done. So, that money, that's completed project. The fire station is based on the preliminary estimates that we have right now, that we'll need that $847,000.
And what are the plans for the public safety building?
Well, that's one of the things, is that we would not be funding the design, and that was, that, in the public safety building, that's, this is design money. The public safety building, we would have to go and find a different funding source to do the design for that. So, yes, ma'am. And community center as well, we would have to go find a different funding source to do the community center.
I guess, I mean, this is, and like someone said, in a perfect world, this was, this is fantastic, and I do believe that it's very important to get, oh, we don't want Center Lake Park up and going, I think it's what's going to bring everybody in. I'm, I'm just personally concerned about all the funding and how we're going to pay everything back, when, how long it'll take us to pay it back, and whether or not we can pay it back without raising the millage rate. Is, have you sat down and figured all this out for years and years to come?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we did. We, we took a look at the financing of the, of it, and, and we can accommodate it.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that's based on projections. And, um, so, I mean, that's the thing about it, when you get into, you hope that you will continue the way you've projected it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if, uh, if everything heads south like it did, you know, eight years ago, then we could have it, we'd have an issue.
Yeah.
But, um, but from based on, based on our numbers, we could accommodate the financing.
Okay. Um, I'd just like to make sure we don't forget about our public safety building and community center.
We, we've continued to explore options regarding public safety. That, that's, that's something that, uh, we, we met on that just, uh, just last week, uh, to continue looking for ways to, to make that building work. And so, uh, that, that, we haven't, we haven't said, no, we're just not going to do it. We, we've continued to move, move forward with it, it's just we've got to find a different funding source for the design.
Okay. Um, I think that's it for me.
Just before I turn it over to Deputy Mayor, Mr. Cobb, can you just talk to CRA funds? Because it, you know, when we started this project many moons ago, when we started the, the CRA, I mean, the whole purpose of the CRA was to fund certain items that would be in the park, in the historic downtown, up and down Oviedo Boulevard. Wouldn't you consider this a bridge to that point?
The CRA monies will, will definitely help. Um, and, yes, this would fill in the gap until we get to them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one thing about the CRA monies though, is that they all don't come in at one time.
Right.
They grow, is what they do. Uh, hopefully, as your increment grows, your balance grows. So, you know, the first couple of years, there may not be a whole lot of CRA dollars out there that could be used, but, you know, as, for instance, when the county money starts to come in, um-
Which is what year?
Twenty seventeen.
All right, so that's three years from now.
Right. Uh, I think twenty eighteen, you'll probably start to see something, you know, of significance.
Can you, uh, and I just don't know the answer to this, can you, once that CRA money starts coming in, can you use that to pay off some of this debt?
Uh, there is-
Or do you have to use it for new projects?
You can, we can use the CRA, the way our CRA plan is written, uh, we have a lot of flexibility in what we can use it for.
Mm-hmm.
And what I have always cautioned is that we need to make sure we don't spend all of it here, that we spread the money out.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, being able to provide for the improvements in the park, yes. Uh, that is something that the money could be used for, because it's in the district.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's an improvement in the district, and so, yes, it is something that the monies could be used for.
Okay.
Uh, we can even look at using the money as part of the operations of the park. We could use, look at it as using it to put, if we decided one day we wanted to put an additional component in the park, we could use it to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but keeping in mind that there's a district and that, you know, we want to use that money all over the district. So, um, it's, it's there, it's there for us to use. Um, I wouldn't anticipate being able to use it until at least twenty eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
But, I think twenty seventeen we'll start to really see some contributions, and I think twenty eighteen we'll really see something come in on the park. So, I think we'll have a lot of a hundred percent values coming in that one, at that time, so.
All right, thank you.
Now, Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to skip over you, I just wanted to help the councilwoman with that one point, because it was getting lost.
Yep.
Go ahead.
To expand on what the councilwoman said, uh, Jerry, if you can come up, because you're going to answer these ones. Funding on the, um, on the drawdown, what's the anticipated annual and how is that being going to be paid or anticipated to be paid? We've been over this, I know.
Uh, yeah, I apologize, I don't have that, that information in front of me tonight, but, um-
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Next, yeah, next year, we anticipate a very, oh, excuse me, currently this year, we anticipate a very small amount, because it's based upon a certain small markup of LIBOR, and we know LIBOR is very low. We anticipate approximately two to four hundred thousand dollars this year. Next year, based upon the drawdowns that we have received from, uh, Mr. Kavanaugh, we would anticipate paying approximately, um, I believe, twenty thousand dollars in interest, roughly. The following year is when we would start paying a little bit more. Uh, we would pay, if I, if my memory serves me correctly, uh, Deputy Mayor, we'd pay about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in interest that year, and-
So, Jerry, that's gotten you now into twenty fifteen, sixteen?
Correct.
At a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Right. And there would be a principal component with that as well, and it's very difficult to anticipate what the interest rate's going to be at this point in time, but I would, I'm guessing, worst case scenario, uh, roughly four hundred thousand dollars.
Is that, yeah, that's some, you said about three hundred and fifty. I'll push it on back and-
Yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand-
It was like three hundred and fifty with a principal on interest is what you were talking about.
Three, three hundred and fifty thousand is my, is where I think it's going to come in, but I don't know how the economy's going to cook, and I don't know what impact that will have on the interest rates. So, I just wanted to have a little bit of a cushion there.
And where does that money come out of?
Uh, that money will be coming out of the general fund. Incremental increases in the revenues in the general fund. We've forecasted, uh, over the next several years, approximately a five percent increase in the ad valorem tax revenues year over year. So, if those forecasts hold true, we don't, I don't have a concern about the repayment of the debt at this point in time. You know, again, unless what Mr. Cobb said earlier, the economy tanks, and I don't know how we control that.
No, I, I understand, I, you know, we're increasing, but again, I'll say the wish list, what we asked for in our budget and what we approved in our budget was a stark difference, in the number of people and what we wanted, and what, again, it's, we always say choices, so I'm just looking at the choices and saying, well, there's four hundred thousand dollars a year, it's just about choices, and where does that four hundred thousand dollars come from?
Right.
And where could it come from?
Understood. And, and the other thing that I'm looking, I'm not an economist, um, but the other thing that I'm looking forward to as well is that the building of Oviedo on the park's going to be a big engine for the city. So, I would anticipate values that we can't even anticipate at this point in time going up.
Possible.
Yeah, and it's, exactly, and it's very difficult to anticipate what the projected increases on that are going to be. So, I think our numbers are a little conservative, I mean, I don't want to sound overly confident, but I, I feel good about the revenue projections that we've been able to put together so far, barring any unforeseen circumstances.
Fire station went down, uh, as the council said, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. Can you explain how that, because I, I thought the bids were higher than we, again, just like these bids came in a lot higher.
Right.
I thought the prospective bids were coming in-
I would have to ask Mr. Cobb of that.
-a lot higher than we had anticipated for the fire station. Okay. That was my-
I don't think we've put it out to bid yet. It's just been our, just us going through, going through the exercises.
Well, it, it went up significantly from the last time to the next time, it went up significantly from our first thought to our second thought, is what I, I remember discussing at another work session, so I'm just wondering-
Right.
-why it's jumping down, you know, fifteen percent.
Right, um- Well, one thing, Deputy Mayor, just, just, this eight hundred and forty-seven thousand is a supplement to what we're receiving from the state.
The one point six.
A million is a supplement to what we're saying, I understand.
Yeah, okay, great.
And that's not saying, but what we're receiving is that we know isn't going to cover the cost.
Okay.
And we use the million as, again, I, unless I'm mistaken on our, in our discussion, we didn't have enough money last time we were discussing to build the design, the drawing, the things that we were looking at last time.
Right, there was bid-
The idea wasn't, we can't afford that, that's not, that's higher than we've anticipated and the monies that we have set aside.
We-
So, when we take out, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm just wondering.
At this point, we have, just as Tom has done, construction estimates from our architect, and we're about ninety percent done on the plans. Matter of fact, the site plan submission should be going in this week, we just signed those documents. Uh, those dollar amounts are a little bit higher, and we've done the same thing, we've started value engineering some of that project. Um, we feel pretty confident that the bids are going to come in favorably, based on other fire stations in the region, and we think that construction activity is pretty decent at this time. So, we're anticipating going to bid, um, late March or April timeframe, it'd be about a thirty-day window. We'll have some truer dollars then, but I think, I've met with Robin and, and Mr. Cobb, and we feel pretty confident the way they adjusted the budget numbers. We did receive one point six million for the right-of-way acquisition. There are some, we're now dealing with FDOT, with the relocation portion of FDOT, and you'll see at your next council meeting, uh, they have agreed to reimburse up to fifty-two thousand dollars to put in a natural gas line to the property. So, every place we can nickel and dime a little bit, uh, we're taking advantage of that. But, we're still working real close with our architect on, uh, what we'll call some alternate bids to the project, to decide if we'll can keep those in the construction project or not.
Okay. I noticed you got all the filter out there, we're back on-
Well, that's actually not ours. Bobby White could comment more, and that's part of the, uh, road project.
I'm storing it there.
We have inquiries for that fill, uh, and we're looking at other opportunities, that has to be sifted and, and compacted and so forth, uh, before we could build anything on it. But, uh, Bobby's team is helping me closely try to acquire, that's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars of our project is filled dirt alone.
We can leave it there, we'll sift it out.
We've told them exactly that same comment, so. Bobby, do you have anything else on the fill?
No, that's, that's Southlands.
Southlands.
For the roadway bike.
Yeah. The geotechnical folks would have to look at it, make sure it's suitable for construction type material. Does that help any?
I just have concerns that, again, just like this, the fire stations-
Right. We did trim down one base space.
Are they harder than we-
You know, we cut one base space off of it, as we sit today, we would have one less truck base space than we do with the two existing stations, so we've taken opportunities. Um, I've met with our architect this week, the next rendering will show you a full brick front, and we'll use a crushed block material on the side and the back, just as we did out at Station Forty-Eight. So, there's some, some good savings there. We're going to alternate bid a training tower, to decide if that's something we'll maintain for the site or not.
You took the pole out?
The fire pole still exists, but it was only four thousand dollars.
I saw it, pool, pool, he-
Oh, the pool? Well, we thought the sinkhole one day might be the pool, so.
Yeah, right. It was all age.
I know, understood.
March, you going to create, uh, create your, uh, bomb proof offices out of the old water?
Well, those, we would like to repurpose those, like we shared with council, I'm trying to get some construction estimates to turn the two water tanks just into general storage property for the city, and eventually, the flat roof, uh, decommissioned water plant building could potentially be an emergency operations center, it's a real hardened building, great location.
Probably a grand, I guess it does.
We're pursuing that right now, as a matter of fact, with the state, with some of their surplus revenue.
Anything else for Chief? Yeah. Thank you, Chief. And I'm, I said, I, I, you know, the, the councilwoman brought up the public safety building, I have the same concerns that we just kind of are, you know, same thing with the, the community center, I know it's, I'm all for where it's at right now, which is where it's at, but we went from two hundred and twenty-five or whatever thousand dollars to get it kind of outfitted and working, and then, one point, blah blah, and then back down, and up and down, and now it's back to nothing. Um, again, you know, the twenty thousand dollars to dump it to the ground is okay with me, but I think we need to start making plans on certain, on those kind of things, rather than just let them-
Right.
-walk along, um, on their own and kind of, uh, the plans are being made, but that we're not making them, uh, they're just kind of being made as we walk along this path. Um, but I do have concerns about the public safety building, because that was simply designed besides remodeling, that was the design cost, to get them the space and to expand them to the space.
Right.
And, oh, I don't disagree with you, but it's less than building a new building at their property that we were looking at, you know, five years ago. Um, you know, but that was kind of the, I wouldn't say the trade-off, but part of the whole thing was, well, the fire station will combine and move out, and then we have an opportunity not to build a whole-
Right.
-new police station, we can remodel this one, and we have to start somewhere to begin that process. So, it's, again, that gets a momentum shift, is what I'll put it, it becomes a momentum shift.
We had a very good meeting, um, last week regarding that project, and, uh, of course we have, we have stormwater issues here on this campus, and really brainstorming how we could provide sufficient space without impacting the stormwater, and, uh, working with what we already have that's impervious. And, uh, we, we came up with some really good ideas that we're going to take a look at and see how we can take and convert the fire side of the public safety building into a police operational side, so. We've got some good ideas that came out of that meeting.
Well, listen, it's, it's just another momentum shift that we're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the other thing is, okay, we build it, now staff it for me. How do we operate and staff everything that's out there? We're going to build a, a splash pad in May, how are we going to staff it, how much is that going to cost? How are we going to police it? How are we going to, what's the cost of operations? How are we going to cut the lawn? Water, you know, get the plants planted and keep the boxes clean and-
Right.
-all that kind of stuff.
Uh, we are going through that exercise right now, and, um, we currently don't have a, there's too many unknowns for me to give you an, an exact number. Uh, as we get further into the budget process, uh, then, yes, we'll be able to give you some better numbers, uh, ones that we would feel comfortable saying to you. Uh, but right now, I don't have a, I don't have a number, I can't tell you, yes, sir, it's going to cost a million dollars to, to operate the park, or it'll cost, you know, five hundred thousand dollars to operate the park. I just don't have that, there's too many unknowns for me to come out and say exactly what it's going to be, but as we go into the budget process, as we start to have revenue projections coming in from the state, um, I think we'll be able to give you a better number as we get into the budget process.
Uh, I don't disagree with those two numbers you threw out, though, as a high and a low.
Good, very well.
I'm perfectly honest with you, and add three hundred thousand dollars in, in what we're going to have to pay in interest, we're looking at more. So, that, those are my concerns, is we can build stuff, and I don't know if it's worse to build it and have it not manned or not be able to do something with it than to phase it, and that's a concern of mine. Said that for a while, you know. We can phase it and do certain things, but if we build it, it'll look good, but if we have one person there, and the park's dirty, uh, the plants are getting weeds, uh, the grass isn't cut, things like that, it's going to be a detriment of an honest operation. And I, I, that's a problem with me to start to, to say, let's continue on, when there is no plan on how to facilitate running it and policing it and cutting the grass and-
Can I just add, add to that, that thought? Brian, are you going to be looking at different options on the operations and maintenance for this park? You and I had some discussions about that, um, as far as the different way, different ways that we can make it so it's not so expensive for us to maintain, either have an outside company do it, or someone investing in it, um, there, there are so many different options out there. Are you going to look at those?
Uh, I know Mr. Bowe will, will leave no stone unturned. Uh, he, he is constantly out there looking for different ways.
He knows what I'm talking about, yeah.
And, uh, there are, I will tell you this, there are some concerns, uh, Mr. Bowe will raise. This is our, um, signature park, and we want to make sure it's done right, as far as the upkeep. Uh, we do have concerns about, you know, we currently outsource our right-of-ways and some of the other mowing areas, as far as our open areas that we have mowed, um, and whether or not that company could provide the level of maintenance that the council's going to expect in this park. And so, that's one of the things that we're, we're, um, struggling with right now, is trying to make sure that we provide that very high level of maintenance. Like, like Mr. Schenk said, if we, if we don't weed the plants, if we don't mow the grass correctly, if we don't, uh, clean it, you know, it's not going to be the pinnacle park that we want it to be. it to be. So, yes, we are exploring every option that we can in, in putting, you know, bringing forth an operations plan.
And I realize we do have a high standard, and we want to keep it that way. I do believe that there are others that have that high standard, too. We're not the only ones. I, I'm one to believe that government isn't the experts in everything.
Correct.
We're not. But, so I, I just think that's worth exploring. There are many different avenues, many different options out there to help, help with that.
I know, we, we agree with you.
Okay.
You know, they, one more second. One more second. Problem's always quick. You know, Tom said many busy, and I think that's exactly it. We are building, you know, that's what we're, how we kind of look at it, all of us, is, you know, we look at it that way. So we want to keep the standard up to that level that they look at. I'll throw out two scope changes that I feel realistically are huge scope changes, one of them. You know, I'm totally not satisfied with the amphitheater and community center. So I'd say build a smaller amphitheater and get the amphitheater, since that, the bond portion that we have to perform is getting the amphitheater out there that's smaller. It'll probably serve us better in the short term, to be God's honest. And we won't be subject to having to have a building closed seven, six days, five days a week, because we can't man it, there's no way to open it and operate it and really have the thing running. And look at that as a second phase, is doing something along outlines. But theoretically, I think chopping the amphitheater on its own and putting it out there. I really think that would work out as a better opportunity for us. The other thing is, I'm really never been a fan of the boats, to be quite honest with you, upon the boats. Never been a big fan. It's a nice concept. I would say, go to many little radio-controlled boats that are, that are chicken boats, and have a little radio control that would be sized to that a lot better, and have them pay, and little radio-controlled boats that run over that, all over that thing, and kids can play with it, and have 10 of them out there, a dozen of them, and have them play with those versus, again, four boats is, is, becomes either a fight to do it, and the 15 minutes that you're going to be doing the whole thing and go, okay, I've done 15 minutes of round the pond, kind of done with it. So I see that it's not like the old, it's not big enough to harbor and really, to me. I like the idea of it. It's an interesting idea, but I see rolling it down to get little radio-controlled ones and make them chickens, if you want, and have them floating all over the place.
Actually, we've had radio-controlled clubs talk to Drew. Well, I don't know if you've talked to him yet. I know I sent you the email. They're, they want to run their sailboat races in there.
Oh, yeah. That's, well, I see it as that, running sailboat races in there. It's a perfect opportunity for sailboats and waters.
Right.
Exactly. You know, I'd say I don't have a park that's, you know, that kind of, remember I said, I don't have a park that's that size.
Anything else, Deputy Mayor?
That's it.
Councilman?
I cut you off before, I'm sorry.
... radio-controlled, or the city boat, in between, the real chicken boats.
Just, just in general, I know we got to, we got to close this up, but, you know, I just want to, in general terms, you know, this project started and was conceived, you know, long before 2003. 2003 was passed, and, you know, whatever we all feel up here, you know, other councils and other groups have been on, but for me, this thing needs to get built, and it needs to get built as soon as possible. It needs to be done. I don't disagree with some of the, the concepts I heard here, but I've always believed when the people vote, they get it right. I say it all the time. People voted. This thing is five, six years behind schedule, and not, not for you, Tom. Thank God for you that you came in here with your company, but the other company we had before them and the, you know, the, the bad luck that they had all around. But, you know, I don't think it's for us now to debate what's being built here. And like I, and I, and I will preface the same, maybe we don't all agree, and we didn't vote for certain things in it, but that is the, the people's will now. And it's got to be built, and it's got to be done soon. We got this hospital coming. The other jewel was the downtown. 426 and 419 has got a, a great future to get done soon. So, I mean, we're, we're this close from, from, you know, everybody has set it up here, from going to good to really great. So for me, yes, how are we going to staff it? All these things have to be looked at. But you know what? The people told us to build this, and that does come with some added expense that we told them about. So they know it, and I'm not getting any calls from anybody, stop construction on the downtown. So just from, from me, not that, you know, I, I mean, Councilman Schenk hit a lot of good points. These are things we have to look at. But they told us 11 years ago to build this project. So we're here, in 10 months, if everything goes right, we're going to see it. So, you know, for me, march forward, get it done, go for it. You know, this is all good news. So all these things, we'll work them out. And, you know, it's not something that the five of us are doing. You know, we had 35,000 people 10 years ago tell us to build this park and build it exactly the way. And, you know, not having the boats out there, whether you like them or not, that's what we showed them. That's what they voted on. I don't ever want to get an email and say, hey, I voted for this, and now you're not doing it, because that puts you in a whole, you know, bad position. So for me, I say, march on. Sooner the better.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Good.
What is our action tonight? Are we?
I'll get to that in just a moment. If I could just make a quick statement, then I believe the action that they need from us tonight, Councilman, is that their staff's recommendation is to move forward with the plan as presented to us, and as long as we give them that action when we're done, that's what they're going to do, and then they'll bring back those resolutions to us at a future date.
You know, to Councilman Schenk's defense, we, we didn't get a whole lot of time to review this. In fact, I'm seeing it on a very short fuse, because I couldn't get to the thing. Could there be a, one more passback? If, you know, I don't want to stop the process. We can have a plan to, to pay for it, but I think there's been a lot of good suggestions that, that we might want to mull over in order to, to maybe get some more savings out of this, or some more value-added, you know, maintain the, the functionality and utility, but maybe find some other things that we could do, either live without or do a different way.
Well, Councilman, from my perspective, you know, the park is the whole catalyst for this thing. It, it's been that way since day one, and, you know, Brian and I have been part of this from day one. So we sat with the study committee, we sat with people for public spaces, which is really where the park came out of, was that charrette back in, I don't know, 2005, '06, something like that it was. You know, anytime we take on a big project, when it was the gymnasium and the aquatic center, it was the same thing. How are we going to run it? How are we going to operate it? You know, we have a competent staff that, you know, always finds a way. When we took on Shane Kelly Park, it was the same thing. When we expanded the fields at OSC, it was the same thing. This is what we promised the people. This is the centerpiece of Oviedo on the Park. It's the catalyst for the rest of the development. It's what they're expecting. Councilman, to answer your question, I think they're going to go back and do a little bit more of that as they go along. At least, can somebody answer Councilman Britton's question? Are we going to go back and try to even drive this number down a little bit further on construction costs, is what he was asking?
Well, just, you know, personally, there are, there are items in the value engineering list that have not had all the, had all the numbers come in. And so there, there most possibly will be additional savings.
Councilman Schenk, you know, can we capture what his suggestions were? I'm not really talking about the O and M aspects or the programming aspects, because that, that comes later. But for the capital project, look at some of that stuff.
Well, what, what is it that you want, Councilman Britton? Spell it out.
Well, just capture Councilman Schenk's suggestions.
Well, I, I, that, that, well, someone asked for clarification.
So you want to cut out sections of the park?
No. Steve, give us some of your, give us some of your suggestions.
I counted two.
I said, was, you know, phase in. You can phase in, do the amphitheater. Like I said, I'm not a, upfront, upfront. I've never been a fan of the design, current design of the amphitheater, so I'll say that upfront. I feel what we bonded, to kind of tie a couple of things in, is we bonded the amphitheater and infrastructure. The other stuff, the 150,000 never went to the people. I mean, the 1.5 million never voted by the people, so I won't go along with that and say that, tie that all in. We, we have a concept. Whether we deliver it all at once or not is another whole thing. And can we phase parts of this in or not? Would it make sense to? And I said, I, I look at the amphitheater and say, that's, to me personally, is one that you can phase in. I believe a smaller amphitheater with, you can put the backend onto it later. And can we do that and start with an amphitheater that does bond us and, and gives us what we bonded with the people 10 years ago, and gives us a facility to allow performances and utilize that space, but cuts out a capital cost and a, an ongoing cost that we're going to have to facilitate staffing and taking care of that right from the beginning. That's my concern, is specifically that area on top of the rest of the park. Can we take on the rest of the park and keep it at the highest quality? But are there areas such as that? Well, like I said, the boat, I just, it hasn't been my thing. I haven't been vehemently against it. It just looks, I look at it and go, it's a small pond. You know, that kind of thing. I, I was at all the charrettes, too. So, you know, I, I understand what the P, project for public spaces, and was at all of that. But that just was a throw-out. If nobody bags onto it, I'm fine. We roll, and we're good.
Yeah, I'm not asking for it.
I just look at it as, we, you've come in saying you're taking out certain parts of the aspects that you feel and staff.
Right.
And whoever, four or five people have felt, well, the overlook's a liability. Some people liked the overlook. I can't say who or whatever, but the overlook was good, the this, the that. Those have come out.
Well, we've recommended they come out.
Those have been recommended to come out, but I'm just throwing out other changes or opportunities that say, we can look at it just as differently as that and say, well, look at the amphitheater and change it to an amphitheater.
Counsel, you made your point.
Yes.
Alan, you know, I, I don't want to vote on changing the design package or anything like that, but if there are suggestions, you know, it'd be nice if they got thrown into the harbor. We have stuff to offer up here, and given due consideration while we're developing the plan.
May I?
Yes, just quickly.
You know, just one thing to forget. Mr. Kavanaugh was up here, you know, this process of going through, you know, vetting of, of the contract, and now you're, now you're going to get into these very deep meetings and really draw, you know, draw this into them and see, you know, is there any other savings? So if there is, there is. But, you know, this, this, you know, and, and with all due respect, and I, I just say this, just jokingly, this reminds me of that commercial. Okay, I'll send you a follow-up email. Well, there's nothing to follow up on that Google commercial. Yeah, I'll ping you later. Well, you're pinging me now. I mean, to me, we don't have a choice. I mean, we can't go back and undo this, even if we wanted to. I mean, people voted on something. I mean, that's, that's the issue that I face. I don't disagree or have any issue with what I'm hearing here. And, and again, some of us may have not liked this, this, when it voted, except for the mayor, none of us were here. So we could have voted different ways. But I just feel like that this is our responsibility now, to get this done and not, and not stop it. I think, you know, when I have Jerry running a financial package and all the stuff that he's done here in the last year, I'm very comfortable that, yes, it's a lot of money, but it's, it's the right way to go. I have Brian and his staff looked at it. I mean, I'm comfortable. I think, and, and believe me, I think everything you guys are looking at, I have the same thought, but I, I just think we got to fly with this now. And the sooner the better. Let's just get it done. And I think there is a plan to run it. And I think there will be a plan to finance it. And, and again, the people told us to do this. They got it right, and we have to go build it now. So, I mean, I don't think there's too much more to, to talk about. I mean, certainly, Tom, as you go along the way, I think you're hearing these concerns from all sides. I mean, if there's anything you can do to, to value engineer it a little more or whatever, or if, if any of this makes, I don't know that we can build a smaller amphitheater, though, or do something different. I mean, you got to build that and get it done, correct?
Yeah, I would caution you about building a smaller amphitheater. You taking 20 square feet or 40 square feet out of it is not going to change the...
I've been splitting it up, the building and the amphitheater, not smaller. I...
And that in itself poses a significant issues in that you have the back, what Drew refers to as the green room, associated with it. So when you add the green room, the bathrooms, and everything else you need to support all the electronics.
I'm not arguing. I, you had that argument.
Right.
I'm, I'm good.
Right.
Please don't.
Okay.
I, I just offer it up a, it can be split, whether we want to or not. We can split it. We have the opportunity. If that's something we want to go. If not, I'm totally good. I'm not reliving, you know, the design of it currently. The design's a design. It's just a matter of, you know, if we want to look at it differently.
Right. You know, anything can be done. It's just highly impractical to split the baby in half, and that's basically what you're doing. And you also have to consider, if, if you do phase it, you know, two, three, four years from now, construction costs are going to be 20, 30, 40 percent higher. You know, one thing Councilman was talking about from a maintenance standpoint, there, there's very little grass out there. There's very little shrubs. I mean, you're basically dealing with a ton of hardscape that looks fantastic and trees, and trees aren't maintained.
A lot of pressure washing.
That's the biggest, and I was going to say that. That's the biggest issue, is the pressure washing. The amphitheater grass is already being installed right now. I'm installing that. So that fence is not going to change, no matter what you guys decide here. Okay? And, you know, other than the utilities associated with it and the pressure washing, those are the two biggest components. How you staff it. I don't know how you staff it here, or you move somebody out there. I'll let you guys decide. But I don't think it's, it's a number that's going to, you know, drive everybody to rethink what they, what they're doing here. But again, I just need some direction. It's, it's modifying the plans right now and going back to the contractors, just time and expense. And I know they'd like to get going. Some of the subcontractors are only holding their numbers for about 30 days. A lot of the contractors want to move on to something else. If they don't have a job, you know, for all of us that are in the construction business, if you don't have a job, they move on to something else. And my job is to keep their attention. You know, another thing I'd like to throw out, and I don't know for what it's worth, you know, I, I met with the mayor earlier, and I've decided to throw my fee into the mix gratis. I can't say that that's going to change a year from now, two years from now, but if I'm out there and I'm working and I can help the vision, I, I'm all about doing that. So again, for the record, I am getting nothing out of this. I don't have a horse in the race. I want to help the city realize its dream. I want to see the park built out, and I want to, you know, honor my commitment to everybody and council's commitment to me and, and our global commitment to the, to the residents.
Because it'll have a great impact on what, the rest of what you're trying to do, I would assume, once the park is in.
You know, Jerry made a good point. I, the, the intangibles are going to spring off of this are going to be great. Can we quantify them? No. But is it going to build value? Are people going to want to be here? Is it going to be a hallmark for the city? I can answer those unequivocally yes. So it may be the thing, you build it, they will come, you know. But there's a right way to do this and a, and a wrong way to do this. The right way is we're building it, we're going to build it all at once. And at some point in time, you guys need to decide what you want to do, because the amount of work that staff and commission puts into it will have a direct result on how successful it is. If you go look at the farmer's market in Winter Park, which we kind of mirrored the cultural center after, every single Friday night and every single Saturday night is booked for a wedding. It's self-sufficient. My guess is that we'll ultimately get there, but it's just going to be a little bit of hard work. The farmer's market that's ultimately going to go out there will shut the street down. You're going to charge vendors. There's going to be a way to generate revenue off of this facility. So it's, it's not going to be a, a situation where it's just going to be all expense. You will generate revenue off of this facility down the road. And we were very careful to design the facility. I can't even begin to tell you how many conversations Drew and I got into them, and the architect and I got, how big does room have to be? How many people for a perfect wedding? You know, where does the groom and the, and the brides sit? I mean, all that thought process went into developing this, this center. So we can have weddings out there.
And every electrical pole has outlets, I noticed, every light pole.
Every, every pole has outlets at the top and the bottom. And if you'll notice, if you go out there right now, there's two cylinder things cord through them. Those are the banners that I was going to talk to Bobby about, when we get around to them, we can start hanging some banners and looking into what we want to put out there. But yes, in, in a large part of this, and again, it's hard to VE this, because we had to make sure that the electrical loads are there now and for the amphitheater down the road. So if we wanted to light it up like Disney World and put all the streetlights in, and the overhead lights, and the lights for the, for the landscaping, and, and run a full concert out there, we have that capability right now. That stuff I can't VE. You know, it, that's the sacred cow. You just can't take that away from the park.
The brickwork that you're doing is exceptional. I went walking around there the other night when I saw them finishing up to open up the road.
Thank you. Got a little bit more to do, but yes.
I, I saw all the lighting being put in to light up the trees. I saw them starting to come into play, all the planter boxes. You know, when you drive to the end of the road where you still have it blocked off right before the lake, they're starting to put in the brickwork there. The complex looks like you're just about ready to open up the front, I'm going to assume.
Yes.
Front building.
Panera and the front building should be available about the same time, and it'll really start showcasing. We put some landscaping in there and get the lights turned on.
Right, trees and green it up. And, I mean, it's really, really, really starting to take shape. Now you can see it. Now when you go out there, it's just, you know, you're not looking at the dirt, you know, wondering what it's going to be. Now when you get on that street and you, you walk along Tom's building, and you look up at the height and the amenities that are on the front of it, the streetscape is really, really starting to take shape. And when you're standing on it, you can just imagine that other building on the other side, you know, something maybe a little bit different than the building that's on the left. So it looks like a true streetscape, with some shops on the bottom. I mean, I, I can see it.
Anything swimming in that lake, Tom?
Big alligator. I saw it.
Little alligators out there yet?
Nothing of that size. I did see a few fish in it the other day. Yeah.
Some deer back there. We saw the hoof prints.
Now, one of the guys at construction told me that there was a big alligator in the big lake to the back where the Weddyls is.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he saw it out there a couple times.
I'll tell him that. He'll never come to a concert now.
Lawrence, you better call your boys and pull him out of there, you know? The big alligator. Get the boys out there, suck him out of there. Oh, there you go.
We're going to put, we'll put alligator boats in instead of chicken boats.
Make the chicken boats. We'll put them back there, too.
Yeah.
Well, let, let's vet all the questions tonight. Does anybody have anything else for Mr. Chank?
I'd just like to say, if you don't mind, my mind's been going.
Not bad.
I'm not opposed to what Deputy Mayor was saying as far as phasing some of the projects in. But then I'm trying to think, as a builder or, or developer, that a lot of the cost is the infrastructure stuff that has to go in first.
Mobilizing.
So that's, that's a majority of, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm trying to, to just put all this in order in my head. So if we were to say, take, we'll just go back to the amphitheater, take that back building off, don't you still have, isn't it?
Go to splash pads. It means your conversation.
There you go, splash pad. If we say, okay, let's wait on the splash pad, but isn't it easier and less expensive to put all the infrastructure, like the water lines and everything, to run it to that splash pad? Is that more expensive than the actual topping of the splash pads?
Yes. And that's a very astute comment. I mean, everything underground has to be put in for the splash pad, all your sleeving, all your water, all your drains, all your electrical, all your infrastructure. So really, by keeping the splash pad out, you're talking about the top rubber portion, and you're talking about the nozzles, and you're talking about the housing, which is a glorified, you know, pool situation. It's just a pump that runs, and it has a little bit of a computer element that...